All right, the first time we get to break in our new dais. So I hope everyone appreciates that. We appreciate it and thank you for the efforts of seeking it out and making it come to fruition. With that, it is Monday, November 3rd, and it's just a little bit at 7:00 on the dot. So will you join me on opening the meeting for the State and City Council?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there any additions to the agenda?
Yes, Mayor, we would like to add a presentation from the State and Food Bank, State and Community Food Bank this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Under presentations.
We will do that. It's the honor to do that. Is there any declarations of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias, et cetera? All right, I don't hear any. Opportunity for public comment? Anybody? No, no public comment. Okay. That leads us to the consent agenda from October 6th, October 20th, and Resolution Number 25-034, City Manager Employment Agreement. What would the council like to do? Counselor.
I'd like to move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. With that, we move to the presentations.
So I'd like to invite Janelle Phelan up. She's with the State and Community Food Bank. We reached out to her recently just to see if she would be able to do a presentation, or they, somebody from the organization, would be able to do a presentation just to share who they are, what their needs are, certainly in light of, you know, with the SNAP benefits being, going away. I'm not quite sure they'll be able to fill us in more. There's more need, and so I'm very thankful that they were able to come this evening, share what they do, and how we as a community or council and staff can support you.
Thank you very much for inviting us here this evening. Bush. Thank you very much for inviting us here this evening. You know, I'd just like to start out, you know, Edna Rickman started the State and Community Food Bank. We've been in existence for 47 years, and, you know, she really set the stage up for the State and Community Food Bank to be successful. So would honor her in this whole effort here. You know, we are, we have a nine-member board, and we meet monthly, and of course, now, the event of the crisis going on for those folks who need food, you know, we've been meeting and talking and strategizing about, you know, how we are going to manage as a food bank and make sure we have enough food. But, you know, the real truth about all this is behind the scenes, the things that go on in this community, we are so grateful and thankful and very blessed to have the State and area community as partners at the State and Community Food Bank. You know, because what goes on behind the doors, behind, you know, our little group trying to figure out what to do, we've got, you know, our retail partners, like Grocery Outlet, who unbeknownst to us is, has a flyer out, they're collecting their shoppers' donations right now for, that go directly to the State and Community Food Bank. We, we're buying product from them since our food, normal food supply has been drastically reduced. So we can buy directly from Grocery Outlet at cost, and sometimes below that, for the products we need, which has just been a huge gift. Things like mac and cheese, canned fruit, canned beans, canned corn. You know, we have Safeway and Ross. Every day, both of those retailers bring us bread. Every day, every day. And the days that we're not there, we have a volunteer that goes picks that up. So we always have bread for those that come through our doors. You know, they also bring us once a week, and sometimes more than that. They're overstocked, they're close to full date items. That keeps us supplied. Big Town Hero, who brings us bread on a weekly basis. You know, and then we have our businesses. Postal Connection, who just called and said, hey, can I put a barrel out? Actually, they've had a barrel in their existence, but they wanted another one. So we brought them another barrel. And Mary Lee Miners, who is, excuse me, our operations manager, went and picked that up today, I met her just before this meeting, and put away, you know, a full, you know, 20-pound pail full of items that she had collected, I think, in just a very short period of time. So, you know, too, you know, the covered bridge, and then, you know, they put out a barrel here just recently and said, you know what? You get a free cup of coffee if you bring in a jar peanut butter. We received 566 jars of peanut butter from them, which is huge. Peanut butter is one of the most, you know, it's very nutritious, and it's something we want to give out to every single person, family, that walks through that door. You know, and the City of Satan, you know, the leaf rake event that you have where you collect canned foods for us, you bring it to us. You know, we get police support and presence at the food bank. We're just, you know, I could just go on. The Dollar Store, which allows us to buy bulk items there at cost for things we need, like cereal and rice. And, you know, let's see, I don't want to forget any of these people, and I'm sure they're going to miss a few. But Focus Heating, who comes in once a year and services all of our refrigerators and freezers to make sure they're always up and running. And we can call them at a dime and say we're having a problem, and they are there and they repair it. And that's huge for us. That's, that's just, makes a huge impact. You know, the churches and their food drives, you know, every month we get donations, monetary donations from churches, as well as they collect food supplies at their place of worship. The schools, our local high school, schools, you know, these are the future citizens of our community, and I'll tell you, every year, their goal is to bring in more pounds during their food drive than they brought in the year before. And it's just amazing. It's just amazing to see, you know, the community effort, right down to, you know, those individuals who are, you know, 12, 13, 14-years-old. So we have civic organizations, the Lions Club, you know, who helps during our Christmas drive, making sure bringing in the food to us. The American Legion, who donates money on a monthly basis to us. And then I can't speak more than enough to our community members. I can't even begin to tell you the daily amount of donations we receive, especially in this last few weeks. It's just been amazing, the donations that, our back door, I mean, Mary Lee was just telling me, she said, "Our back door is as busy as our front door." And, you know, that's really big. We, you know, the community members that believe in, I mean, it's just amazing. They will call and say, "I'm bringing in pallets." Not a pallet, but a pallet of food. And if you can't take it all, I'll bring it back to my place, and I'll store it, and I'll bring it into you when you want it." And we're talking pallets, you know, 30 to 50 cases of, 24 is in a case, of soup. Soup is a big item for us. Canned tomatoes, big item for us. So peanut butter. So, you know, the community just steps up when we're in need and helps out. And then, you know, I guess I just want to wind up here just talking about, you know, the 40-plus volunteers that we've asked in these last two weeks to work relentlessly. We have seen, you know, the first of the month, the first half of the month of October, we had 29 families, or 26 families a day. That's probably about average. The last 10 days of the month, we've had over 45 families a day. Just fried, or just today, it might even be our record, we had 59. 59 families, and that's huge. That is just huge. So we're asking our volunteers, you know, to work four hours a day and relentlessly. They are, you know, working in the pantries, handing out food, receiving food, stocking shelves, stocking pantry shelves, going to retail stores to pick up supplies. So there has definitely been, we are feeling the impact of what's going on right now with those who need food. And, you know, thank God for this community because that, we are, you know, a 501(c)(3) organization, nonprofit, so, you know, everything that we do is a result of monetary and donations of food products. So, you know, that we, so that's, you know, and that's the stuff that all goes on behind the door and right now, you know, even though we're trying to figure this out as a board, that is what is keeping us afloat. And our shelves, you know, we just walked through the pantry today, and we feel, we feel pretty comfortable with what we have right now, that we can, that we can continue giving the nutritionist food to those who walk through our doors. So I'm just going to end this and hand this over to Mary Lee. Mary Lee Miners is our operations manager. She is the guts of the organization. She orders our food, she organizes the stock rooms, she is, you know, we are very fortunate to have her as part of our board and part of our team at the State and Community Food Bank. So Mary Lee, you want to talk a little bit about?
Well, I brought along our flyer that we really, this is what we live by. We'll take almost anything, but these are the items that we, we never have enough of. And it's a cyclical thing. Today, we don't have cereal, but tomorrow we'll have 400 boxes. So you never really know what you're getting, but these are items that we can always, always use. Right now, I feel real comfortable with the amount of products that we have on our shelves. But if we keep having 60 families a day, if you think about it, you get eight, they shop, so they come in the door and they get two meats. That's if we're lucky to get meat from the grocery stores. And then they shop from our shelves for the items that they want to take home with them. But if they get, everybody gets two boxes of mac and cheese, and we have 60 families a day, you can see we go through an amazing amount of peanut butter and mac and cheese. So, but right now, I feel real comfortable with what we have on hand, so, and I think we're going to continue to see this numbers until the SNAP situation is, and then I think those people, some of those people continue to come to our door. So that's really what I have to say.
Yeah, I just would end with donations, you know, bring to our back door. We have an area where it says donations. It's not through the front door, it's through the back door. You just knock on the door, open the door, come on in. We have a doorbell that acknowledges that someone has come in, and someone will be there to greet you. So, you know, I would just really, again, want to thank all of you for inviting us to come and just share a little bit about, you know, what's going on in our community and, you know, how, you know, you guys can help us and...
And if you'd ever like to just come and walk around and see what we do and what, how it's presented and how it's accumulated, you're welcome to come anytime, drop by and see how it works.
Yeah, we're located on 1210 Wilco Road. We're open five days a week from 9:00 a.m. to 11:45. You're welcome to come in, and we will, we will be happy to let you, let you witness the magic that goes on in the State and Community Food Bank, so.
Or the chaos.
Do you have any questions?
Looks like we do.
Well, thank you very much for what you do. I'm very compelled listening to you. I own the spud bust.
Oh, yeah.
And I would love to set up a time and bring some potatoes into you guys, cases of them, to help the families. Do you accept deliveries after that 11:45 hour, or are you pretty much gone?
No, somebody would be happy to meet you there. And I would say potatoes are something, potatoes and onions, well, there are items that we just try to always have. Potatoes and onions are a couple of those that we buy all the time. So it's a big part of our budget, and we're very fortunate to have the funds to be able to go and buy such things, so.
Well, without speaking to my CFO, I think we'd be able to donate some.
If you just let us know you want to meet somebody there, we're there.
Can individuals drop off cash donations?
Absolutely.
At the back door and?
Yes.
Or come in, whatever, however you want to do it.
Yes. It's been interesting since the SNAP thing, our people, what Janelle said, we have as many people coming in with donations in the back door as food goes out the front door. But yes, monetary donations, we offer receipts if people want receipts for their donation so that they can do tax situations, but...
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate everything you do.
Thank you so much for your presentation and all this information and everything that you're doing. You mentioned something about four hours a day on your volunteers, and it sounded pretty taxing to some of them. And so I was just wondering, if I knew, you know, a few youth in the community who are looking for volunteer hours, maybe for high school graduation type of the deal, who should we contact for that?
Part of the situation that we deal with is not, you have to be 18.
Oh, okay. Good to know.
To work there, yeah.
Okay, so 18 and over for volunteerism on that.
And then we have a volunteer, a volunteer volunteer. She does all the coordinating of volunteers and all of the lining them up. Typically, we would have five people a day working at the food bank, and the last two weeks, we've had eight people a day. So there is a need for volunteers.
Wow. And so what is your coordinator's name?
Paula Taylor.
Paula Taylor.
Yeah, and we do have a Facebook post, or we have Facebook and we have a community webpage as well, so.
Okay, thank you so much.
And you can call the food bank and say, you know, I got, can I get an application or whatever? Or you can just come into the front door and get an application. You can even ask if Paula's working, if you want to talk to her directly.
Yeah, and that's not just the volunteers in the building. We have a number of volunteers who pick up this food each day from Marion, from Ross and Safeway and Grocery Outlet. They pick it up and haul it back to the food bank and unload it. So there are those volunteer positions available, as well as people who work in the building itself.
Thank you.
Very informative. Thank you. Maybe I have this question. Think we could put a link to their location on our site, or is that possible?
Yeah, I think we can certainly share information about a community organization like that.
Yeah, or just, I would, I'm curious to know what kind of staples you need all the time. That's really informative to me.
We have, I brought two.
Oh, cool.
But you can post this on your webpage if you like.
Yeah.
There you go. Can I see it? Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. I really appreciate what you all do.
Thank you very much.
All right. With that, that leads us to no public hearing. That leads us to general business, which is Resolution Number 25-035, the appointment of Leonard Hayes to the State and City Council. And with that, Alyssa's staff report.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I was notified early last week that the mayor had wanted to recommend Leonard Hayes as the, to fill the council vacancy, and so that is the topic before you.
Okay, is an opportunity for public comment on the appointment? Doesn't look that we have any. Counsel discussion? Don't everybody?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Counselor.
I am excited for this appointment. I, Len comes to all of our meetings. He, you know, has done two budget cycles, so he knows, he already knows what's happening. So I'm excited for him to be able to jump in and just help us along the way for the next year. So thank you for showing your dedication already before you even come on the council.
Counsel Patty?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Leonard, I really appreciate you stepping forward and volunteering to do this. At the end of the day, this is a volunteer job. It doesn't pay at all, just in case anyone didn't tell you. So I'm really grateful for your sacrifice, because there will be sacrifice, and thank you for stepping forward to do it.
Yeah, I guess I'll just tell, I would just speak to the number of folks that actually expressed interest in this. It was fantastic the way we did this recruitment, if you will. I think we had a lot of highly qualified people in that room, and definitely people that have a future should they decide to run for election, I think. I think at the end of the day, you heard the comments up here. I think for me, Leonard's been there. Leonard walks the walk, he does the talk, however that goes. But he's been there, he's committed himself, he's engaged himself, he's been out here talking, he's been interacting, he's been learning. I think so for that, that gave me the edge, and just really showed the commitment to be there and really fill the need. And I know he says he's retired, but maybe he won't be retired in about three minutes. So with that, anything else, folks? Okay, with that, Alyssa, can you, oh, whoa, 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 I'm getting ahead of myself. What would the council like to do with my recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, I got to first. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Resolution Number 25-035 as presented.
Okay.
I second.
There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 25-035, the appointment of Leonard Hayes to the State and City Council. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries four to zero. Alyssa, will you help me with the administer, or will you do the administer the oath of office, please? Aye, Leonard Hayes.
Swear to support and uphold.
Swear to support and uphold.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
And laws of the United States.
And laws of the United States.
Of America.
Of America.
The state of Oregon.
State of Oregon.
State and city charter.
State and city charter.
And general ordinances.
And general ordinances.
Of the city of Stateon.
Of the city of Stateon.
And to.
And to.
Faithfully perform.
Faithfully perform.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of counselor.
Of counselor.
For the city of Stateon.
For the city of Stateon.
So help me God.
Thank you. (applause).
Welcome.
That chair looks very comfortable. Thank you, Alyssa. Thanks, Mr. Hayes, again, for stepping up, Counselor Hayes, for stepping up and assuming the position. With that, I'll give you a second to get your, does he have a packet? Does he have a packet? Just want to make sure. Yep? We're going to be on Resolution Number 25-036, the adoption of the State and Safety Action Plan. And we'll have a staff report from Jennifer. Oh, look, she has a spot at the table. Nice.
Yes, I was told to use this chair and this microphone. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. For the record, my name is Jennifer Siciliano, the Community and Economic Development Director here in State. Tonight, we're asking the council to adopt the State and Safety Action Plan that has been developed with Federal Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant that the city received earlier this year for $120,000 in federal funding with a $30,000 local match, which included some in-kind matching from volunteers and staff attending various open houses and This will guide us for the future of transportation safety and improvements for all users. The plan combines data analysis, community input that addresses vulnerable road users, risky driving, and high-risk intersections and stretches of roadway. It positions Stateon to pursue future federal funding for safety projects as well. The planning commission reviewed and recommended the plan at their September 29th meeting, and the City Council also had a full work session October 20th where we, where our consultant presented the plan to you. So our, just to let you know, our consultant, Kittleson, is here to answer any questions, but I hope that most of those questions were answered at the work session. That's it.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer. This is an opportunity for public comment on the State and Safety Action Plan. Okay, don't have any public comment? Counsel discussion? Who wants to be the first?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Sims?
No, I think this is really good. This is a step in the right direction so we can, you know, pursue some grants and for safe streets for all, and I think it's a pretty good plan, and it's really going to help us out here in the future for applying for some of these grants when the government gets going again.
Yeah, I agree. I would just say that, you know, I think over the years, the last couple of years especially, we've heard a lot of concern from the community about pedestrian crossings, traffic safety, et cetera. And I think this is a reflection of responding to those complaints and listening to the folks, and I think it's a pretty thorough and comprehensive review, and I think it's the right time to try to get this in place so we can get some of the grant funding. So, good job.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor.
I just want to say that we had a work session on this, and my questions were answered. So I don't.
Thank you.
Don't really have anything to ask, because I've already asked them.
All right. What would the council like to do?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to staff. I want to say thank you to Steve, or Counselor Sims, for attending the meetings on this one. I would have liked to be more present for this as we kind of formulated it, but I wasn't available to, so again, thank you to Counselor Sims on that. With that, I move that we approve Resolution Number 25-036 as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. There's a motion and a second to approve Resolution Number 25-036, the adoption of the State and Safety Action Plan as submitted. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. That leads us to Resolution Number 25-037, policy regarding non-travel business, meals and refreshments. This ought to be a good one. Julia?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilors. This, we spoke also at the work session on this proposal. As you remember, the Oregon Government Ethics Commission issued some guidance clarifying that meals, snacks, and beverages provided to public officials or employees by a public entity are considered a financial benefit unless expressly included as part of the official compensation package. And so that was a problem. We weren't quite sure what to do as far as meals... We weren't quite sure what to do as far as meals associated with budget committee meetings that went from six until nine or beyond, or work sessions where we started at six and council might meet for a long time, or staff morale, team-building events, that it proved problematic. After discussion at the work session and with advice from our attorney, we've developed the attached resolution that provides some policy that essentially would say that we can have those in modest increments, essentially. I will note, and this is mentioned in the staff report as well, because council will on occasion be receiving a financial benefit by being provided food as a result of this policy, you have a potential conflict of interest, and it is strongly recommended that you acknowledge that. It's not a real conflict of interest, because it's not your decision, and it's not all the time that you're providing this direction, but it, you would potentially have some financial benefit. I also had mentioned in the work session, a real potential conflict of interest for me, or a potential real conflict of interest for me in implementing this. The resolution actually addresses this by specifically directing me to implement it, and Ross felt that that was sufficient, so I won't have to come back and ask council for a further motion to direct me to implement it. So, with that, our recommendation is that you adopt the resolution, which would allow us to essentially continue doing what we have historically been doing, which is in modest increments and at times that seem appropriate, having some food, snacks, types of things at business-related meetings.
Okay, thank you. Opportunity for public comment on Resolution 25-037. Don't hear any council discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Patty?
Any, Julia, thank you for this. Any word from the Oregon Governmental Ethics Commission since the last time we talked?
No.
Oh, still no opinion from them?
That is correct.
Oh, darn, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Counselor Or?
Mr. Mayor, I think the fact that we even have to do this is very ridiculous, and I want to state that for the record, and I hope that the Oregon Government Ethics Commission is listening, because the fact that they won't even clarify this and help us out in these issues is pretty ridiculous, considering how some of our tax dollars is actually spent. And so, we have to write this so that we can have broccoli at our meetings sometimes. It's pretty comical. So, I'm doing this for the sake of Julia, so that we can just have a little bit of sustenance while we're having our long-drawn-out meetings to take care of our community. So, I will be a yes, slightly under duress for this.
Julia, does that mean caviar is off limits?
I would probably not consider that modest, so I would say no.
Just checking for my friends here. Anybody else? What would council like to do here?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Sims?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 25-037, adopting a policy related to non-travel food and beverages as presented.
Second, Counsel Patty.
Okay, motion and a second to approve Resolution 25-037, the policy regarding non-travel business meals and refreshments. Is there any further discussion? Alyssa, can you poll the council on this one, just for fun?
For fun, yes. Counselor Hayes?
Aye.
Counselor Sims?
Yes.
Counselor Carey?
Yes.
Counselor Or?
Yes.
Counselor Patty?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is First Quarter Finance Report. Mr. Brand.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and counselors. For the record, I'm James Brand, the city's finance director, and this is the first quarterly report for the fiscal year 2025-26 and the budget year 2025-27. At this point in the biennium, we are 12.5% through, so just kind of keep that number in mind as you look through the report. It's the same basic report that you've been seeing from the previous year. So, at the one-quarter mark, the city has reached, received just 5% of its budgeted revenues, and the shortfall is basically a timing issue with the tax revenues yet to come. Most of those will come in the second quarter, in the November and December months, and of course, we have some budgeted projects that are reimbursed by grants that just haven't come to fruition yet. So, all of these timing issues, there's no indication that the city will receive less revenue than we project. So, it's kind of a similar story with the expenditures. We're at the 5% mark for those as well. So, it's kind of making me rethink maybe the format of the report, because there are so many one-time projects. We do plan to implement some more projections into our monthly reporting internally for the staff, so I might play with some different formats in this, but probably have a projection to where we think we'll end the biennium budgetarily. So, I'm just trying to keep that in mind, but if you have any recommendations on a different format of the report, you can let me know. So, I will make some comments about where we are behind on the revenues and expenditures. The revenues, like I said, was mostly the tax revenue and grant reimbursements for projects that haven't started yet. On the expenditure side, we're actually spent more than budgeted thus far for the community center, the building you're in now, and part of that is because of the furniture that you're enjoying right now, and some of the tech projects that we've made deposits toward. And the facilities fund is also at 48% of this time, and that's because of the conference room remodel that is nearing completion now. The outside is painted last week, and that project's nearly complete. And we also improved and installed a new fence behind the city hall. So, these were some projects that we had budgeted that we've already completed or I'll just point out some other things. There's a cash table that you'll see on the second page, just some trends you could notice there. I'm assuming your eyes would maybe gravitate toward the general fund, so I'll speak a bit about that. During the fourth quarter of 2025, we transferred about $1 million in the ARPA grants that we had received from the general fund to the wastewater and stormwater funds, where those monies were spent on projects. We still have a little bit of money left in that stormwater transfer, but that explains a lot of the drop-off in the general fund. Also, the parks and pool funds are awaiting some reimbursements, so there was an ARPA grant in the parks that we've spent, and we're anticipating to receive $210,000 in reimbursements from Marion County in the next month or two, I would think. And the pool, we've spent some of the project money that we had pledged with the endowment, so there's $100,000 that we're anticipating receiving from the pool endowment pretty soon. But that's actually put that fund into a negative balance for the time being. Just some other notes, we did receive the, for the 10th year in a row, an award from the GFOA for the budget book that we present to you on an annual basis. That's great, but we're more focused on what we did not score well on, so there were two categories that we got some poor marks on, honestly. One of them is our key performance indicators. They're not really written from a budget perspective, so while we do have performance measures in each category, they weren't necessarily budget-oriented. A lot of statistics were provided, but their meaningfulness is lacking, and frankly, I agree with it. So, we're taking a look at each department and the measures that have been reported historically, and we're thinking about providing more historical data, not just like two or three years, but having longer periods of data that's meaningful, and possibly adding some benchmarks. And so, we're using different cities and what they report. We did some AI searches, and we're just, we're trying to find more meaningful goals and measures to put in the budget document that can portray, you know, how successful or unsuccessful we're operating. The second area we scored poorly on was tying our council goals to our spending. So, we did have a chart of council goals, and obviously, we're reporting where our spending is, but we're just not doing a good job of putting those two things together. So, we do track that separately, but it's just not something we've put into the budget document before, so we will work on ways to show that better in that budget document. And then finally, I just wanted to give a brief update on our search for a new utility billing clerk. We had at least 25 applications. We invited 14 for interviews. I think we interviewed 11-ish, and we got a lot of good candidates. We had a second round of interviews, and so, we've made an offer to someone, and we're just in the background check phase right now, so it's promising, and we should have someone very soon, so we're excited for that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the report.
Counsel Patty?
Thank you. Just kind of curious if this is like a reflection of our times, but is 25 candidates normal for that position?
I don't think the requirements are very stringent on that position, so I can't say, but I know I was here when we recruited Nancy, and we didn't have that many applications, but we had a decent pool, and it was a pretty extraordinary number that we got this time.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Sims?
So, James, I was looking through this, and you know, there's, sometimes it's hard to figure it out, but I think my only question was, is there any, do you have any real major concerns on where we're at with revenues or expenditures? I know you, you know, you kind of went over some stuff, but it seems like you explained some of the stuff like the community center and the dais and.
Yeah.
Conference room, but is there any other, you know, real big concerns that we have here for either of those?
Yeah, so I do look through this, and I try to anticipate questions, and when there's numbers that don't look quite right, I do look into it, and so, that's to say that I have scribbled some notes in here that explains to me why the numbers are what they are. And so, to answer your question directly, no, I don't have any major concerns. It is the first quarter, and you know, you can't extrapolate a lot from just three months of data. You know, if we were to skip any quarterly report, I'd say we'll just skip quarter one and wait till we get some more data to look at, but that's why I think there might be some more value in moving to more of a projection model, and that's something that I'm looking for Randy and I to develop a projection spreadsheet for each fund, to where we think we're going to end the biennium, and just kind of month by month, line out some expenditures. Some things will be steady, like the utilities and rents and that sort of thing, but when it comes to the projects, that are those one-time-based items, we'll map that out, and there'll be some that we just don't know if we'll complete them within the biennium, but some of them we'll be able to refine and adjust month to month, and so, we'll be able to eventually, I hope by the next quarterly report, we have a projection model built. It's been a goal of mine for probably a year now, but luckily, since we won't be building a budget anytime soon, we'll have time to work on that.
Can I also add for council's information? James meets with all of the directors, actually even the managers that are responsible for money monthly, so we get a budget-to-actual report every month. We look at it, that each department who's responsible for their budget looks at it. James meets with them monthly to discuss all of these things, so that he's comfortable with where they're at, or if adjustments need to be made. So, I just want to make sure that you, that you know that's going on behind the scenes. It's not just even James looking at the spreadsheets, it's the directors looking at the spreadsheets, and Alyssa and I looking at the information and making sure that we're, that we're good.
Yeah, for example, this is the citywide report right here, and I've got scribble marks in here and notes when I meet with the directors, and it helps explain different numbers. I'd like to put this into a spreadsheet, and then I can have notes in there that I don't have to look back at January's report in February and try to find the note. I want to make this a living document that we can have a projection on, so it's something I've done in the past with the Department of Corrections, and I'm confident we can build it here and get it running soon.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Carey?
10 years is great, but I also appreciate your transparency on the areas that you really want to focus on fixing and improving on. That speaks volumes.
James, I have a question. Is the dais a part of the reason why it's worth 30% for the mayor and the city council?
Yes, exactly right.
Okay. And so, the dais does not reflect on the facilities fund?
That's correct. It's in the general fund.
Okay. So, that would explain it, okay? Is that 48% of the facilities fund make you nervous?
No, I had some notes on that one, too, didn't I? The facilities fund, yeah, is it 48% due to the progress of budgeted projects, the conference room remodel that we talked about, and then the city hall fence? Those were both in the facilities fund. The city hall fence, we finished, I think, in August, did that one right away. There's a nice chain link fence behind city hall, we replaced a wooden fence that was falling down, and yeah, and I think we spent some money also on the Moose Lodge report out of the facilities fund, so it is at 48%.
Okay, and there's no risk of us spending grant funds that aren't going to be realized?
As long as we stay on top of the grants and put reimbursements in on time, we should be fine and get reimbursed for those projects.
Okay. Counsel Or?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. James, the streetlight project, is that finished? Are they done with all of them?
Yeah.
Facing all of the streetlights?
Yes, operationally, the project is physically finished. I'm surprised we haven't gotten an invoice yet, because we do need to pay half. Usually, you pay it before the project, but this one's on good faith and trust with the Energy Trust of Oregon and our partners, so we could probably follow up and ask for that invoice, but yeah, we just haven't paid it yet. It's going to be in that $65,000 range. I think that's maybe a little high, but I would anticipate something about that that would pay for that.
Okay. Can you, can you remind me the, what we budgeted for? Was that, like, taking into consideration the savings, the cost savings from the change out of the LEDs, to the LEDs?
So, that was budgeted in the streetlight fund to do the installation. What we did not do was reduce the budget for energy cost savings, so we kept that budget the same, not, you know, that was built not knowing if we were going to do the project or not.
Sure.
So, there should be some operational energy savings throughout the biennium because of that.
Okay, thank you.
Have to keep looking down that side of the dais to make sure I'm not missing you. Is that it, James?
Yes.
Opportunity for public comment, since I missed it before James gave questions. Thank you. All right. Thank you. All right. Communication from city staff. Julia?
So I have a few. As you mentioned, the diocese are here. Alyssa noted that there's a few things that are still, these little grommets they're called, are missing, but we're, that was just a communication error. The walls have been painted. I don't know if you noticed how much brighter it is in here. Next week, the, tomorrow, the community center is going to be closed so that we can do the AV equipment. So your next meeting in here will be fully, fully realized. So that will be really exciting and hopefully more transparent for the public. They'll be able to actually see who's speaking. The cameras will turn, so that's really exciting. So I wanted to share that. I also wanted to let you know, related to the community center and the community center park, we're looking at a couple of grant applications that we're going to be submitting for. One is a community development block grant through the county to mitigate the asbestos tile flooring and put new flooring down, as well as do some ADA upgrades to the front of the building, the entryways, the pathways are not in great shape and they were built before the ADA Act was actually in place. And so this will help us make sure that we're compliant. I think it's a great project. I think it ticks a lot of CDBG boxes. We do have some funds left still to do some flooring, but not to do all of the mitigation that's necessary. So if we get this grant, it will really allow us to do what we had intended to do, plus the front of the building. So we will be submitting that hopefully, I think it's due early December. And then I'm also working on a grant, recreational trails program grant, supporting Public Works. They're very busy doing a lot of other things, so this is something I'm sort of taking on. But it's to widen and improve the pathways in Community Center Park. It's paths that are not in great shape now. The Parks Fund would need to, you know, over time, would need to provide funding to replace those. So we see it as an opportunity to get some funds that will help us fix what needs to be fixed, but also widen it and make it better for people in wheelchairs and strollers and things like that. So that's what we're calling that, an accessibility improvement project as well. So we'll be submitting a grant for that actually in a couple of weeks. So wanted to share that. We had Halloween last Friday. It was a crazy, crazy fun event. We ran out of candy for the first time since I've been here and we bought more candy than last year. So that was fun and crazy and wanted to thank everybody that came for that. And then I also wanted to invite Barry up if you want to come. He, they're trying to move forward with the roundabout, but in order to move forward, we want to do a little bit more analysis. And so he wants to share that with you. And then he and we and Counselor Sims and Mayor Quigley can also share what we learned at the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers meeting this afternoon as well. So Barry, take it away on the roundabout.
Well, I knew it is. Barry Buchanan, interim Public Works Director. Yeah, one of these days I'll push this button and it'll actually go on, all right? Anyway, the roundabout has been a contentious issue as far as my tenure here has been and how we're going to move forward and what we're going to do with it. We have, we're of the understanding, as it stands right now, that the roundabout price as designated at this point in time is about $12.6 million. The amount of money that we have potentially coming from the allocation from federal funds is about $800,000, $800,000 going down from $4.2 million, yeah, $4 million all by itself. Okay, I thought it was 4.2. So there's a substantial reduction in funds becoming available. There is a substantial increase in price over and above the original $5 million, well, $4.85 million that the roundabout was anticipated to be. In finding this, we have asked Kittleson, to an actual fact, continue to do a further study and analysis to tell us whether reduce, eliminating the roundabout, looking at a mini roundabout, looking about a signalized intersection, and looking about phased, phased application of a different type of intersection control that's concerned. We have asked them to an actual, well, we've put a proposal to them, asking them to look into this. We have not included in this study additional stormwater analysis. Stormwater has been a major consideration as far as the intersection is concerned. We believe that there has been enough study done on that at the moment that we can actually proportionally understand what the cost of the stormwater system would be, given any one of those results. So Kittleson, as it stands right now, have not responded directly to our request for this investigation, other than to give us a tentative proposal and price, which they are now considering again whether it's sufficient to do what we're actually asking them to do. So as soon as I know more, we'll get back to you. But as it stands right now, we have put that project as far as design and construction on hold until we can understand more. Any questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Quick question.
Go ahead.
Barry, as you're talking about a signaled intersection, that's kind of taken back to Halprary and Silverton Road where they did a major reconstruction of the intersection. Would we add a lane or keep the left turn lane and the preceding lane?
That's a really good question. That is an actual fact, part of the question that we've asked Kittleson to look at as far as phasing is concerned, that cannot be in actual fact constructed without that left turn lane as it stands right now, or whether should it be included? And if we were to stage it, could we actually stage it through with that left-hand lane being incorporated?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Or.
I recall when we were first trying to decide whether or not we were going to do the roundabout or the intersection, they were fairly, I mean, when we're talking about loans dollars, but they were fairly comparable in price. So I would anticipate that a signal light would also be, if the roundabout is now 12 million, up from five, I would anticipate that a signal light is going to be around there as well.
Okay.
So what would be the, why would we transition to that instead?
Okay, it's all to do with life cycle cost associated with the project itself. We're actually looking at, in reality, the signal, signalization of that intersection is in actual fact cheaper in capital cost, but more in operational cost long term. And therefore, in reality, the roundabout structurally and construction wise is in actual fact more expensive than a signalized intersection first up. Long term, because there is not really major operational costs associated with the signal, with the roundabout, it becomes cheaper as the life cycle goes on, as opposed to the signalized intersection where we actually have maintenance of mechanical, electrical, and ongoing electrical operating costs. So we're trying to get, we're getting Kittleson to give us a true evaluation in a life cycle sense rather than an instantaneous capital sense, is what we're asking for.
And I'd also add, from what I've been able to see in the transportation system plan, where these two scenarios were looked at, as you know, this was before any, you know, before our time or anybody that's currently working on its time. But from what it looked like, it was a pretty high level estimate of what the costs were and the estimates were similar because of the realignment that would be necessary for the signal. And that's why we want to look at it. I think the project moved forward with that assumption, but with the escalating price in the roundabout. And then part of that escalating price was because of the stormwater issues, because of the ESA and wetland issues, that might not be the same if it's a signal and a realignment of the road. And so
Handling purchase, I'll add that as well.
Yeah. So looking at, knowing now what we know about the roundabout and the costs, it might not be that a signal was about the same. So we want to look at that before we move too much further, literally down the road.
And I'll add to what Julia is saying is that we believe at this stage it is potential, potentially possible that we could actually phase a signalized intersection as opposed to do it all as one, just answering Counsel Carey's question. So we want to look at the broader and bigger picture at this stage and come back to you guys and give you a real analysis of what the options really are. The round, the large roundabout is also optional with a small mini roundabout. Now, people will argue that that's not possible because of transportation through the intersection, but in reality, mini roundabouts are everywhere in the world and they become driveover roundabouts. And for the amount of traffic that we have going through that intersection, the type of traffic going through a mini roundabout may be a potential answer to this. I don't know the answer as it stands right now.
Mr. Mayor. I just have a follow-up to that. So when we're doing the projections of how much it's going to, how much these things are going to cost, so we started this right, right when I got on council, so that was seven years ago. So in that time, it's more than doubled. Are we, if we scratch this and we're going to go start a new thing, are we anticipating, like, are we anticipating today's cost? Are we looking at it's going to double? So whatever it is today, if it's 12, like, if we were to do the roundabout today and wait seven years, is it going to be 24 million?
That is a real possibility and that's why we want the numbers.
But are we going to take that into consideration when we're looking? That's what I want to know.
Well, that will be a decision once the numbers come back on determining whether we want to move forward today. Escalation prices are always, always an issue. And you can roughly say that every, every five to seven years, given inflation as it stands today, will double the price of anything that you stalled today. But it is in actual fact cheaper on a net positive value analysis. It's actually worked out cheaper to an actual fact, delay everything for as long as you possibly can, if you actually understand the finances of it.
And Counsel Or, we're going to have information of what a roundabout today would cost and what a signal today would cost. So that, if it's going to escalate, it's going to escalate at the same rate, but it's going to let us know how different those two are. And ultimately, we're sharing this just to let you know, we're looking at it and we're going to be coming back with some information to see if we, we want to veer in a different direction. A lot more information to come.
Thank you.
Counsel Patty.
Thank you. Barry, thank you for bringing this to us. I just had a question. You know, I know we've devoted significant resources and monetary resources towards the design of the roundabout. At this point, are we figuring in the amount of resources we've put into that design work versus what we would have to start from scratch for a signal intersection?
Absolutely will be. Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yes, you are correct. We have put a lot of money into this project so far. And I'll put the number out there. We're roughly at $1 million on expenditure on this project, which is majorly excessive and expensive to the position that we're sitting in right now, offering or suggesting that we're going to take a different horse. That is problematic and I appreciate that and understand that totally. And yes, we will be looking at what certain costs and the overall cost of a project would cost us to move forward with an alternative.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Simms.
I, one thing about this, so is there, have we talked, is, that's something we could cost here with Marion County, a light, a signal light there? Is there any thought of that? I'm sure there probably has been, but it seemed, I know it's a county road, so I just, I'm surprised that there's no, Marion County's not involved also in the cost.
I will say they have indicated that they have zero interest in contributing at all to a roundabout. We haven't had a conversation about a signal. I don't know what that, that would be. And I just wanted to state that, at the end of the day, we just want to do this analysis before we go further down for a 12-plus million dollar roundabout. We just want to make sure that we're, that we're moving forward on the right thing. It might be that we do all this and we say, yep, that's still the right, that's still what we want to be doing. But given that none of us were here and there's been escalating costs and there's been changes, we just want to make sure that we're moving forward on the right project.
I'm going to add to what Julia is saying. One of the major drivers here is that we have substantial reduction in available funds. And the substantial reduction is moving from an available funding opportunity of $4 million to $800,000. That's a $3.2 million reduction in, in funds that we thought were available for this, for this project. The study that we're asking for at the moment is, I'll give you the number, is round about $20,000. And that, in my opinion, is insignificant to the amount of money that we've actually spent to date to come up with a positive answer for you on how to move forward.
Barry, I appreciate that. The challenge is, is what you just mentioned previously when Counsel Patty asked the question. And that is, the community knows that we've been spending money after, after money after this, and now they're going to get another answer, which isn't, which is, which feeds into their, the narrative that it's a waste of time. Sorry, that's just my, that's just my take on it.
No, I appreciate it. I understand.
I appreciate this. I appreciate the, what you're bringing to us. And I think, I don't want to get too far in the weeds on this because it's, we're going to come back to it, right? So Counsel Patty, you got something?
Yeah, just one closing thought. And if this is something that we can do, I would like to see re-engagement with Marion County as to whether or not they would be willing to assist and partner in this project, or at least in looking at other alternatives, seeing as, I'm guessing, that's what they would like to see anyways. And so I say that because I think that there would be interest here in partnering in some form or fashion to allocate resources towards this project.
Our intention was always, once we get this evaluation done, is to actually speak to Marion County, because my understanding was that they weren't interested, exactly as Julie said, in a roundabout, but potentially with other options. And hence, we're looking at other options so that we can talk directly to Marion County with those options in hand.
All right. Thank you. Can we come, go ahead.
Oh, I was going to move on to the next topic.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. So while Barry is still up there, I just wanted to mention, for those of you that don't know, that Barry, James, myself, Mayor Quigley, and Counselor Sims drove up to Portland this afternoon in the rain and the wind, and met with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers staff. And it was, I think, a very informative meeting. They shared with us sort of their, their plan, which is that for next year, they would do a drawdown that's not as deep as they ultimately want to go. It would essentially be no deeper than they've been before, which is 1425 feet. So it'd be a little bit lower than sort of they do every year, but there's been several times where they've gotten that low and we have not had any issues. And then the plan would be that they would look at that, evaluate that, and then try to slowly go down a little bit more each year until they finally get to the, the number that they're wanting to get to. As we discussed sort of after the meeting and those of us in my car, that's, you know, we, I think that gave us a lot of comfort, that, that initial information, that I think we are less concerned about next year, but we definitely have a lot of work to do to make sure that we're understanding and they're understanding our position going into, into future years to make sure that they're not going too deep, too fast. And so we've got a lot more work to do in terms of analyst, analysis and response. They're, the SEIS supplemental environmental impact study is going to be released, they're hoping, around November 14th, and then we'll have a lot more information to share. So that's sort of a nutshell. I see James coming up. He clearly has something maybe to add or just wants to be part of the conversation. So I just wanted to, so I'll open it up to others that were there that want to fill the rest of council in.
Sorry, I'm going to jump back one topic to the roundabout, but I just want to clarify because we were talking about that and actual expenditures to date on the roundabout. It's actually much closer to $500,000 than a million. So I think that's more accurate.
It's still too much, but it's much better than a million. Thank you.
Thanks for that clarification, James. Yeah, Julia, thanks for that. And thanks for setting up the, I don't know who set up the meeting, but the meeting, but thanks, Barry, for setting up the meeting today. I think it was informative. I think the community can rest a little easier, knowing the comparison that they showed us to Green Peter. They were making a comparison between Green Peter and Detroit, and how they can actually mitigate it, if you will, and it gives me a little bit of resolve, I guess I would say. I think the biggest piece for us is that it was revealed that they're not under a court order to do this, that they control it, right? And so, if we take them to heart for what they're saying, they said, as soon as we notice that the turbidity goes above 10 turbidity units, that they can, they're going to communicate with us, and they're going to see what they can do to try to dial it back. So, we'll see. But that was, there was some, I think it was a good meeting overall, and it gives me some hope that we're not going to be in a critical crisis mode this time next year. That's it for me.
They also gave us some information that we're going to explore further with our lobbyist, as well as with Representative Deal and others at the state level, about some potential funding. It's a little, the timing doesn't work super great, so we're going to explore what makes the most sense for us that would help us potentially with some other mitigation. And we are planning on having a work session or executive session, depending on how we need to make decisions or have discussion, to talk with council about the different options and choices that we have in front of us for mitigation. But we've got some very promising mitigation options that we believe are more attainable in the $2 million realm than a pre-treatment that's more in the $15 million realm. Counsel Patty's looking surprised.
I'm confused.
Sorry.
Just to clarify, they're not under a court order, and they're still going to do it. Is that to, I don't understand. Can somebody help me understand?
There is an EIS that's out there, a current EIS out there, that requires them to, in actual fact, do a cooling tower and a fish ladder for the dam. They don't have funds to do that, and as an alternative to doing that activity, they, in actual fact, want to do the drawdown and release of the fish through the dam, rather than having physical structures that they don't have the funds to, in actual fact, pay for. So, it is my understanding that they potentially could come under this new supplemental EIS, be mandated again, to, in actual fact, take the action in any case. So, they're looking at undertaking this as a goodwill, not a good word, but as an activity that they would do as an alternative to the work that they've been, have been asked to do and agreed to do in the past. That's my understanding. Now, I will correct it if I find out more on something different.
That makes sense, I think. But the thing I don't understand is, didn't they kill a bunch of fish over a Green Peter instead of their intention? And so, aren't they going to do the same thing here?
I can answer that. They don't care about the sockeye salmon, the cokony. They're not endangered. They're not on the endangered species list. So, they can kill half a million cokony salmon, and they don't care about that. They're worried about the Chinook going through, going to the upper reaches of the North Santee Am.
I would offer council that when we have our next meeting, we can present some of the documentation that they presented to us today, and that might shed some light on some stuff for y'all, so.
Yeah, I guess, the summary takeaway is that it was a good meeting. It was a productive meeting. We are a little less concerned, but as I keep saying, we still have to keep our, you know, foot on the gas because we need to make sure that everything is taken care of. That's all I've got.
Real quick on that, was there a good showing from up the canyon also? Was it just primarily people from?
It was just us. It was just Statons, just us, yeah.
That leads us to communication from the mayor and the council, and as always, I'll let council speak their mind.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Kerry, or Simmons, sorry.
You can't see as well now, can you?
No, I can.
Okay, I got a couple of quick things. So, boards and commissions. So, there is, there was five amazing individuals that we interviewed for the position of city council, but there's always those openings on the Parks and Rec Board. We've got two. One opening on the Arts Commission, and I think we're going to have a Budget Committee opening now that Counselor Hayes has been fleeted up. So, there's some openings on some of our committees. The second thing I had, the water bills, they are incorrect. I went online and looked at mine after we talked on the way home. So, my bill's $43 this month, not quite the right amount.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should have mentioned that, or had somebody mentioned that. Yes, so, and James, maybe you want to come up and speak to that. My understanding is, is that, I'm not sure exactly what happened, but only the water portion of the bills got uploaded to express pay. So, go ahead, James.
Yes, so, we don't know exactly why this happened, and it's also earlier than normal for the bills to be uploaded, but for some reason, only the water portion of your utility bill, which includes water, wastewater, stormwater, and transportation, only the water portion was uploaded to, for people that view it online. So, we believe that will be corrected by tomorrow. So, the people online, if they view it tomorrow, we are hopeful that it will be correct and include all four portions. Everyone that's going to get a mailed invoice, those will be correct as well. That's a different system that we use, bend mailing for those, and it will be correct.
And we did, I saw that we did post something on Facebook already today to let people know that.
Yeah, that helps. The other thing I had, I wanted to do a shout-out to the Santee Am integration team. They're setting up a mobile site at the Santee Am Center, where the DMV is. So, they're going to have access to, allow access to food there, be similar to a food bank, I think, but they are, anybody that has SNAP benefits can go there, take their SNAP card, and they are giving out food there. It goes Monday through Friday, 10 to 4. I'll just say the number in case somebody wants to call. They want you to call first if you can, but 971-433-5511. So, that's another opportunity beside the food bank, which is a very good resource. So, Santee Am integration team is also doing it to help out folks that are not getting their SNAP benefits. And the last thing I had, Barry, can we, I know the season's over now for most of our road construction, but maybe in the future, have like an update of where we are working on streets at, so we know what's going on with the roads. Sometimes it's kind of hard to figure it out, what streets are being worked on.
Do you want that now, or just want us to schedule that for future council meetings?
Yeah, I don't want to put him on the spot today, but, I mean, he can, like, he can be in future meetings. That would be great.
Right. And on the next council meeting, I'm scheduled to, in fact, give you an update on all projects anyway, and the streets would have been included in that presentation.
I received an email this week from Barry, and thank you for the detailedness in your email about the speed limit up past Wolf Ridge. And I did notice that this has been something that's been evaluated in the past, and signage has not been changed yet, and I'd like to see if we can move forward with that. The other thing is, I kind of have a conflict with this one, because I'm a food truck owner with a generator, but I know that Mr. Taylor is here tonight, and I didn't know if we wanted to talk about this this evening, or wait for another evening.
You have the floor, Counsel Kerry.
So, if we could have, Mr. Taylor, if you have something you want to share about your concern?
Don't be on the spot, Ken. Yeah, I'll come over here. So, James Taylor, I own Jet Auto. It's a tough one for me, because I've always been very much for the food trucks and everything. It's a big, it's a good thing for the community. I'd tossed around putting a yard together of some sort, but lately, we've had a food truck down there that has an extremely loud generator. I know I saw you walking around down there one day. Of course, he wasn't there.
I heard, I heard it.
We went outside with a decibel meter one day, just to see what it was like, and it was 80 decibels in our parking lot, which, if you look at the spec on Marion County, is above what they say during daylight hours. I've talked with him. He's put a board in front of it. It helps some, but then some days, you know, then somebody, you know, that directs the noise elsewhere, so that person says something, so then he moves it another way, and I, you know, it's one of those, it's a tough one to come up with an answer. I do know, you know, I mean, I have a shop. It gets noisy, you know, briefly, you'll make a bunch of noise. But being down there and all morning long until noon, it's a drone that it, it's like nails on a chalkboard almost, echoing in there. And it does wear on you. Ken was down in our corner lot one day, and he was, the other truck was running an evening shift. I walked from my 210 address all the way down to the border of my 110 before I could hear Ken's generator. It is one thing that I've thought about. It's like, jeez, whenever we did the Sunday deals, how loud is that for the neighborhood? I don't have a definite solution on it by any means. Hopefully, he does come up with a quieter generator in the long run, or it gets established with permanent power. I know that if I ever decide to go and approach the city on doing something with the 110 lot, I definitely would, that was always one of my goals, was have power, though, just so that the neighborhood, I mean, there's not many houses around there, but there's a handful of houses. Like I say, I don't have a definite answer for it, but it might be one of those things in the long run, we might have the city look into a noise ordinance of some sort, but taking into effect, you know, I mean, you get power outages, you got emergencies, so people have got to run, you know, want to run generators to keep their freezers, fridges, not lose food. I do get that. One thing I will add in there, might keep track, the, I know when, setting up the food trucks, one of the things was 72-hour stay in one spot. Keep an eye on it, is all I can say. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, James.
Oh, I guess one other thing I might add. It came to my attention, the flags, the tall flags that are, you know, eight feet plus tall, apparently are not allowed in the downtown area. And when we were working on the sign code years and years ago, I don't believe we had it set up that you couldn't have those in the downtown. They just couldn't be blocking a sidewalk. But somehow, that got added in there, so it might be time to look back into sign codes and maybe bring it up to date a little bit again.
Thank you.
Thanks, James.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Kerry, you done? Sorry.
I have a, just a clarifying question about that. So, it was just mentioned that there is a noise ordinance for Marion County?
Yes, but our noise ordinance is, so it's for anything in the county. So, it's not applicable to the city's noise ordinance. So, my understanding is it regulates anything that's in Marion County that's not in the city. We do have a noise ordinance, but it doesn't speak to the decibel levels, and it basically, it doesn't allow noises, you know, it's not anything specific as far as like a decibel level, but it is loud, annoying noises, I'm not saying that right, between the hours of 10:00 p.m. and 7:00 a.m. So, that's really the only time that's restricted, which means kind of you can make any noise you want between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. And, you know, we've talked about it. I've talked with, I've spoken with a couple of you about it. It's not ever been an issue before, and there have been food trucks on that lot. There have been food trucks other places. I'm not quite sure what the issue is specifically. It just must be that generator, because I don't know that we've ever had concerns raised, but certainly, walking around, you hear it from all parts of downtown. And so, you know, there are some things that we could potentially do within the noise ordinance, within the mobile food truck ordinances. So, there are some things that we could potentially do if council directed us to work on that. So, I don't know if you had any more questions. Jennifer's poised to say something if you have anything else.
Counsel Patty, go ahead.
Hey, thanks. Appreciate it. I just want to go ahead and make an announcement from my chamber liaison role. So, it sounds like the chamber greeter is moved on, and that's a vacant position right now through the end of the year. And so, I had had somebody reach out who was kind of interested in that position, and so that led me to reach out to Alicia Oliver, who's on their board, and then kind of find out what their process is for selecting a new chamber greeter. Sounds like, I don't know if they're actively searching for someone, but they're interested, if anyone is interested. And the way you go about that is contacting them at board@statensublimitychamber.org. That's B-O-A-R-D at symbol statensublimitychamber.org.
And Counsel Patty, you said chamber greeter, but you mean chamber CEO, correct?
Yeah, sure. She called it greeter in this email. That's why I said that, sorry.
All right, thank you.
Anybody have anything else? Counsel Orr.
Okay, I have a couple. I want to say thank you, Julia, for looking into and finding those grants for the floors and the ADA ramps. Like, that's exactly what we're, like, looking for, for like, other opportunities to leverage money, grants and things that we can, you know, we don't have enough money for the floor, but we can find some. So, thank you. I really appreciate that. Those are the things that we've been asking for, so again, thank you. I wanted to give a shout-out and a thank you to the downtown businesses and community organizations for fantastic downtown Halloween. It's always just amazing. I feel like that's one of the biggest community events, especially for our kids, and it's so fun to see them. The library, we walked through and did the choose-your-own-adventure, making the cookie, and that was a lot of fun. They kept wanting to, they're like, we have a bag for you. I was like, no, I'm going to eat this whole thing right now, so I'd, save your bag, but thank you very much. But that was a great time, too. So, thank you for the community coming together. That's an amazing event. I am, I'm on the Marion County Materials Management Advisory Council, and that was spurred on, we've had two meetings so far, and that was spurred on by the recycling, the Oregon Recycling Modernization Act that came about. And that's still kind of like a, learning what that is and what that means, but basically, it came, it came into being on July 1st of this year, and so, what they're aiming to do is make a statewide uniform recycling compliance, so that all across Oregon, everyone knows and can recycle the same amount, the same things. So, we've had issues where in urban areas, you can recycle a whole bunch of things. In areas like, you know, outside of Staton, and even in like Mill City, they don't have the ability to, they, in some areas, they didn't even have recycling cans or the bins to recycle glass. So, they're trying to make it uniform, Oliver, the state. And the last meeting that we had last week, we were going over statewide goals that we were choosing, they had like little lists of goals that you could choose, and we were deciding what that was going to be for Marion County. We didn't quite, we talked about it, but we haven't quite solidified that. And what that means is, once we pick a goal, we get $3 per capita for each community. And so, for Staton, that would be about $27,000 that can go towards an education campaign. But what's happening is in Marion County, we're all, the 21 cities, we're all in agreement of, well, Kaiser and Salem are still trying to decide if they're going to come in together, but potentially, they are. We can pull the money together to create an education campaign, or make sure that we can meet our goals for that, so. that we can meet our goals for that. So more to come on that. I never knew that recycling and garbage could be so interesting. So there's that. Okay, I promised us there, one more thing. There's something that I was thinking about. As kind of councillors transition outside of their role, I wanted to see if there was any interest or opportunity to have a seat on the Budget Committee that was kind of left for, like if a previous council member wanted to be on the Budget Committee. Let's say that it was full, but having, I feel like having that institutional knowledge and having someone who's either been passed or, you know, recently, you know, is not on the council anymore, wanted to come forward and be in that position. You just already know, you can just kind of jump into that role and it just helps people stay engaged. But also, you don't lose that, you don't have to teach people over and over again what we're doing. So just wanted to see if you guys had any interest in having a spot like that for, you know, even right now if a, I know we have a, we have a spot vacant, but you know what I'm saying. Like, if there wasn't any and a previous council member wanted to come forward and be on the Budget Committee type of thing, so.
Yeah, works for me.
I don't know if that's legal to, I think you have to have the same number of citizen members as council members. So you could certainly have a policy that says deference is given to former city councillors, but I don't think you can just add, but we can look into that. I don't believe that you can add extra spots beyond that, but we can look into that, just to confirm that.
Okay.
I want to make sure I understand what you're saying. You're just have, you have a desire to make sure that someone has succession for the next person. So if you're not up here anymore, that you would hope that the person would be engaged in the Budget Committee, for example?
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's not really a point thing?
Like, for instance, like Counsel Jilio, when he, I'm using as an example, but when he stepped down, I would have loved to have him, you know, still be part of the Budget Committee if that was, because this is a big time commitment. Budget Committee is less of a time commitment, but still, again, holds that institutional knowledge of what we've been talking about. And I think that isn't, that is important and vital to what we do.
And I think you can absolutely do that where if somebody steps down and there's an opening, that you can give that deference. I just don't know that you can create additional spots on the Budget Committee for, that's above and beyond that citizen member for former councillors. So I was, maybe I wasn't clear on what you were asking.
That's, that's what I wanted to do. But you're just saying that we can't do that.
I will confirm, but I'm pretty sure you can't.
Okay. That's it.
Counsel Hayes?
Mr. Mayor, just to kind of reiterate something that Mr. Sims brought up in regards to a particular species of fish, kokanee, he's absolutely correct. Just want to bring that up. They really don't care about it. But what I would like to bring up is on Facebook, being a part of two Oregon kokanee groups on Facebook and talk and discussion, Detroit this year saw a boom in fishermen for that particular species of fish due to green peter not having anything. Sweet Home, I know, has still got a lawsuit going on over a lot of losses that came to them. But I just wanted to say that maybe that could be a little bit of leverage. I mean, we've got fishermen now asking if they can still get down the fall/winter ramp, which is way down there, to get a boat in because they want to fish for them so badly there. But this last summer, amazing amount of boats and fishermen, not skiers, really. It was just a lot of fishermen and a lot of success, a lot of good limits and people that were happy. And recommendations when people came up, says, is there anything left in green peter? They'd say, no, go to Detroit. And that was if you did not want to cross the Pacific Crest Trail and go to central Oregon, to a couple of my favorite lakes over that direction. But just wanted to throw that out there, that Detroit was highly recommended for that. And it could be some leverage to keep some water in it and keep from killing anything.
Okay, thank you. With that, I guess some of the councillors stole my thunder, but that's okay. We'll get, we'll get to that in a minute. I want to get in front of this, Julia. Can you tell me about the tree lighting date, maybe? Do we know?
Yes. It will be December 5th. The time is 6 o'clock. It's going to be in Community Center Park. It's the tree that, well, if you go out there now, it's got a star on top of it because our public works staff got it lit before the rains got so bad that they couldn't get the lift truck vehicle in there. So it's lit and there, I mean, it's not plugged in, but it's lit and a star on it. And there is choirs confirmed. There is, I think we're still working on a Santa, Santa has been reconfirmed. We had a Santa and then Santa wasn't confirmed. And it sounds like we have reconfirmed. And so the idea is that people will gather over there, do the tree lighting, and then we'll actually also use the community center for some, maybe some crafts, some hot cocoa kind of thing. So making it a bit more of an event.
Awesome, thanks. I just wanted to reiterate what Counselor Sims said regarding the boards and committee openings. Counselor Hayes' appointment tonight really is the progression. And that's really, that's very much how I got interested in the community and in getting engaged. So I think I was on the Parks Board for several years, five years or so, then went to Planning Commission. I actually took a stab at getting appointed to the council and that was rejected two times. But that got me involved in the community and got me involved in the committees and that's how I migrated upwards. So I really appreciate Counselor Sims bringing it up. And I think we have, what, five? Or how many openings do we have? Several, you posted it, right?
Yeah, there, well, there's two on the Parks Board, one on the Budget Committee now, and then two on the Arts Commission.
Yeah, great. So there's quite a few opportunities for people to get involved. And so if that interests you, please, please sign up and let's get those committees filled. I will tell you that, again, I want to reiterate the people that came forward for that council position. I'm really happy with the way that was tracked and the way it worked turned out. Those folks that were in that meeting that really came forward really exhibited a real desire to be involved in the community. And so I hope in eight months from now, when we have three council positions and the mayor spot come up, that those folks are involved in it. So there has to be a succession plan, folks, for people that are up here. I'm not gonna speak for anybody other than myself, but at some point, it's time to do something different and it's time for us to make a determination what direction that might be. And that's when those folks are really needed to come up here and say, yep, I want to take their place. So I'm looking forward to that happening come June. Because we got to keep the progress that we've made so far going. We can't go backwards, we can't revert. And it's all based on your input in the community. So please consider doing that. With that, I think that's all I really had. One thing is, is there a council liaison spot open for a thing? Are we missing something?
There will be, but I have to confirm what spot that is.
I'm just looking that direction.
I can't remember. It might be, it might be RDS. I'll have to look.
I think it is RDS, actually. And so I think these other folks are busy. So I think at the end of the table, might get a nod.
Well, it is.
You'll find out soon enough, sir. Oh, last thing, sorry. Thanks for the reminder, Jim. I want to make sure everyone understands, I had a discussion with the owner of that business. He's really trying hard to fit into the community and be welcomed here and he's trying to do the right thing. And so I've given him some guidance. I was, I told him, I said, hey, that generator's way too loud, especially at 4:30 in the morning. And he read the code, he understands it. And that's why he changed his business hours to seven now to try to make sure he's not doing that much noise at that point. But he's also trying to mitigate and work to get a power source on the current location. So he's trying. I think it just takes more education from everybody in the council to make sure we engage in our community, our business community and help them understand how to navigate through stuff. I mean, he was getting different communication about the code. And when he expressed it to me, I said, no, that's not accurate. And I went back and I confirmed with Julia, yeah, no, that's not accurate. So we just got to make sure we help folks navigate and make sure people are set for success in their businesses, especially downtown. And yeah, I think it's time for us to evaluate the code and look at it. I don't see anything wrong with those flags. But again, that's a council decision. So maybe we have a, have a discussion and put that on the agenda for another time. But I just want to know that he's, he's trying, all right? So, but I don't disagree with what you say. It's louder than you know what. I heard it from seven blocks away walking one morning.
Him and I've talked.
Yeah, I know. He's, right.
He's trying.
He's trying, so. Anything else? That's it. Thank you all for participation. Counselor Hayes, you still up for the challenge?